Have a roll call, please.
Allison Campfield here. Michael Cohen.
Here.
Jorge Master Petro.
Here.
Deborah Neves.
Here.
Frank Sacchamandi.
Here.
Michael Zion.
Where?
Jonathan Baxter.
Yeah.
Sergey Sivstov.
Here.
Vice Chair Srini B J.
Here.
Chair Guston Hopper.
Here. I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next order of business is ordinance two seven two five dash twenty five master plan consistency review. The proposed ordinance is amending and supplementing the township of Milburn Development Regulations and zoning ordinance article five design performance standards. D R Z five two five point three storm water control. Mr. Moore, if you please tee us up.
Certainly, as the board is well aware, whenever a zoning or land use ordinance is introduced prior to adoption by the governing body, in that interim period is referred to our planning board for a master plan consistency review. And then we refer back to a report back to the government body, whether the ordinance is inconsistent or not inconsistent with the master plan, which then leads to their ability to proceed with a second reading or public hearing and potentially ultimate adoption of the ordinance. So as always, we have an outstanding memo from Topology, Mr. Pedo and his colleague was here today to speak to it as far as the consistency with the master plan. So there may, as I understand it, be some other questions and concerns that be raised by, with respect to the ordinance itself. We do have the ability to throw recommendations. We can make recommendations along with our finding. So with that, I'll, and your permission, turn it over to our planner.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, so it's storm water control ordinance, but that does live within your D R Z code, so that's why we're here tonight. Council here has explained it's part of the M L U L and the regulations that we hear for master plan consistency, and that's pretty much the purpose. And pretty much every master plan always wants better storm water, including yours. And so this review of your 2018 master plan and any recommendations, we produced a memo that has a series of page numbers and objectives that, you know, speak to better quality of storm water management. And we very much like resilience plan here in New Jersey, and so that's the purposes of this and advancing those objectives. And so this memo pretty much summarizes. We find it consistent.
So.
And that's your new over twenty six memo.
Uh huh. Oh, well, Graham says yes.
It doubles the current requirements.
Yeah, it might, yes.
I have one question. How much of a burden is doubling the requirements of attention to the engineering?
Well, we looked at this obviously not from a consistency perspective, but from the perspective of this being implemented and what that means for development and for reviews and so on. And I recognize, I think it's beneficial to tie it to the state regulations. There are some instances in here where it refers to specific sections of the state regulations, which can be problematic because the state does on occasion change. If you reference one point six, well, what is now one point six now becomes one point seven or something like that. So I think there's some.
One way around that is as amended. Yeah, the language as amended, of course.
Correct, or just to say in accordance with the, you know, if one point six is dealing with definitions and say, in accordance with the definitions of seven colon eight, you know, it's more administrative than substance. Doubling the volume would, and I understand reasons and purpose for that of having additional storage on site. I mean, if you have a underground system, let me step back. You have a surface space and it has a volume of, I want to come up with a reasonable number, ten thousand cubic feet. So it's three feet deep and fifty, you know, generally fifty foot square. You now have something that is either fifty by a hundred and three feet deep or it's some multiple of that to get to that amount of storage. The other thing is not, having been involved in this, is the reason, why is it doubled? Is it not fifty percent? Why is it not something else? Is that you want that volume to be effective with the rest of the volume. If you say, I want to have twice as my volume and somebody adds it at the higher elevation, well, then that is only helping the larger storms. It's not helping the smaller storms. But it just says you have to double the volume, not how you double the volume. At least our reading of this ordinance. So it would make the storage systems twice as large. In volume, I mean, that that is what it says. Whatever volume you come up with to meet the requirements of various elements, the two, ten and hundred year storm or current rainfall amounts, future rainfall amounts, you have to have twice as much volume for that.
This is for commercial projects only, right? This doesn't apply to single family residential loans?
I look to Steve on that.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Because residential is governed by the R S I S, which.
Well, this has an exemption. Who are I S? R S I S, excuse me. That are not preempted by.
Right.
It's applicable to non-residential major developments and redevelopment projects and aspects of potential major developments, redeveloped projects that are not preempted by R S I S.
So it would apply to a mixed use development where you have retail or commercials and residential. So it would apply to that because R S I S has a carve out that says if you cannot distinguish between the residential portion and the commercial portion, then it, the R S I S standards don't apply.
So I have a question. This wasn't ran by you before fifteen?
I was asked to review this as part, in my role as a planning engineer.
The who wrote these ordinance?
Well, I, I don't know.
Probably Martha. Either she did the last update, but it also changed.
Yeah, it had to go, it has to go to the state for approval. I don't know if we did that already or.
Probably did.
I thought we did, so they approved it.
This is.
Okay. This has been something that we've been working on for quite some time. You know, with all the new commercial developments, you know, they should be able to figure out a way to accommodate it.
But when you said mixed use, does it include one hundred percent residential buildings like?
If it's a hundred percent residential, then the residential site improvement standards govern. And within the R S I S, when it talks about stormwater, it basically just says you must comply with the state's stormwater regulations.
So in well tech family, what goes by R S I S, if I, you know, a ten unit apartment building goes by R S I S?
Correct. Anything that is one hundred percent residential. Now, if you have a parcel where the residential is, say, on this part of the track and you have a retail building on this part of the track, you could end up, because they are separate, you could, that the residential portion would have, would comply with R S I S. You know, it's on one track, a little bit of a gray area, but that commercial building would then fall under that.
Most of our, coming, I'd say, like the ones that are just built, like the heart, they're retail on the bottom, so therefore.
Right. It would be. Most times mixed use is truly mixed use. You have retail on the first floor or commercial on the first floor and residential above.
Yeah. So this is, this applies also for pre-developed sites, like for example, if we have a parking lot, which is one hundred percent developed. And now there is a mixed use building. These ordinance apply for those sites?
It would apply, you would follow the procedures to determine, depending on the specific parameters of that site, whether you need detention, you need to provide stormwater management or not.
Because E P usually, when you have one hundred percent lot coverage, for example, existing parking lot, and now a new building is coming there, you don't have to do any stormwater management or study or propose. But some municipalities are asking for that. Even the E P said you don't have to, some municipalities are including that in their ordinance.
It, on the surface, you know, it seems like, well, if you have a parking lot, hundred percent impervious and you're going to build a multi-family, a mixed use building.
Yeah.
And you're not going to, you're going to take out some of that impervious coverage. It seems logical that, no, I wouldn't have to do it.
Yeah.
We have found in that certain circumstances, say, the front part of that site drains to the street, the back part of the site drains to the back. It is not necessarily that black and white. You have to look at it and the design engineer has to evaluate each of the drainage areas because it is based on the drainage area, not the site as a whole. If it all drains out to the street or all drains to the back, yeah, it pretty much is ninety nine percent of the time, you're not going to have to do water quality, you're not going to have to do reductions. And certainly you don't have to do groundwater recharge. Groundwater recharge in Milburn is most times not something you have to deal with. Unless you have certain circumstances, in my opinion, where you have a wooded area, a naturally wooded area, that does not mean the exclusion set forth in the rules under a P A one.
Now, is it possible for a town, I know this ordinance doesn't do it, would there be a way for us to pass ordinance that applies to hundred percent, like high density housing buildings? So it's like a four story apartment, no commercial on the first floor. Is there a way we can force increased stormwater retention on those types of projects?
I hope that we could preempt R S I S, in other words, or go beyond its requirements?
I think to go beyond what R S I S requires, requires a special, I forget the specific term. There are waivers, there are special standards that R S I S incorporates for certain areas.
But we can go beyond. We cannot go below to that, but we can go beyond.
The R S I S was developed in nineteen ninety seven when it was codified, was to set, this is the standard. You cannot exceed that standard unless, essentially D C A says they'll allow specific standards, I think Harding Township has special standards. It comes up so rarely, I never, you know, nobody has a book anymore, it's all online, but it's in the appendices at the back. There are specific waivers that are reviewed by the Site Improvement Advisory Board, which are then have to be accepted by, I think it's the commissioner of the D C A. But you, it sets maximum limits. Because before R S I S, every town had a different standard. This town says roads only had to be twenty eight feet wide. This town said they had to be thirty four feet wide. And, you know, the R S I S put it all into one standard.
So going back to the question that Frank did, can we incorporate multifamily with some, I don't know, about four stories or about twenty apart units, something?
Sounds like we would have to go to the state and get special protection and maybe that's something we should pursue because we're in town with floods and.
For an ordinance or for each specific case?
I, I didn't get this far into the details.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. These are great questions. I know in Newark, they make you, and I believe it's, well, I think it's for every project, but there's very few all residential projects in Newark. I mean, they're either industrial or they're mixed use. Newark also has a problem with flooding. They make you treat the site, they don't care that it's a hundred percent impervious today. They tell you that you must assume that the existing conditions are a meadow. Basically what it was in the sixteen hundreds before Newark got built. Because obviously, if you treat the existing conditions as a meadow, your runoff is like this. And you put something on it and now it's like this. So you have to deal with that. It makes it difficult, but it also, because where do you put stormwater? You're going to have to put it underground. I mean, you know, for the most part, which is inconsistent with what the state regulations are, unless it will infiltrate into the ground. So it's a balancing act because, you know, I mean, they make it, we make it work somehow. And, but I did not really look into that kind of a specific scenario, but they do it.
Like important, so we'd like to want to look into as a supplemental ordinance. Newark can do it.
And I think Union, Union also does that. You have always to consider like a span development.
I, I, I'm not sure that that's the case. I have a, we're working for Chick-fil-A on their site in the middle of Route twenty two. We had to do detention, not because the town required it, but because there's actually a stream that runs underneath that property. We had to go to D E P and get a flood hazard permit. We also had to deal with the O T. And this is one of those cases where I think we were reducing the amount of impervious, but because a portion of the site went to the westbound lanes, a portion of the site went to the eastbound lane and a portion of the site went right into the culvert. It was not that simple. It, but I don't believe that they required us to treat it as if it was something otherwise.
Right. No, we go, whatever we can do to help. We have also a problem in the West End Town. You know, West End, no South End Town. So whatever we can improve.
Right. The other thing I would suggest that you consider is this is for major development. This is for a quarter acre of new impervious that has been created cumulatively since, it's February of two thousand and four. I know it's two thousand and four, I think it's February. Or disturbs more than an acre. I'm sure you have a lot of sites, your half acre parking lot that you want to redevelop isn't covered by this. It is not a major development. I'm also the board engineer in South Orange. I want to bring this up to them as well because we get a lot of sites that don't fall under major development. So what do you do? You know, some towns have standards for minor development. One that comes to mind because I have a project there is Burnersville. It's very structured. This is what you have to do. And I think that helps cover and sets a parameter for what do you do for a site that does not fit into this.
So this one is only for.
Major development, right.
Which on the major development said that the language of the repeal and replace, the replace part, there's no page numbers. When you hit the replace part towards the end.
Yeah.
The paragraph A two, the purpose references major developments as defined. And then it says below in section two, Roman numeral two.
Well, that was one of my comments too.
There was no section.
Yeah, I think it means section B. There's Roman numerals that are used in here.
Instead of letters. So it's a flow of site, but is the definition of major development in there? The quarter acre and the.
It, it's in the, it's in seven colon eight.
Right.
I know that for.
Yeah, that, yeah, but I guess, and then there's another, yeah, well, as you see, there's other, in D, it says for exemptions, the standard C, section number before A two below. Again, it's referencing things that don't coincide with what currently.
Yeah, it's, it's using Roman numerals and there are no Roman numerals. That's again, kind of a.
I don't know who was.
Formatting.
Who wrote, I guess, just a question.
Yeah.
By whoever did it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure who wrote it. I don't know if it was, it was Topology or if it was Martha.
So. Can I ask, could we have them relook at this and just before we bode on it? Because I don't feel comfortable with. First of all, should we be adding minor and major on the same ordinance?
We'd have to come up with a definition. Two separate ordinances, but we should do that. Planning what you make a recommendation that would do that and put it through the zoning committee.
Because we don't approve all these other things.
Yeah, I think that. It appears as if the master plan consistency issue is not an issue.
Yeah.
But the actual substance of the ordinance might be something that the board wishes to make recommendations regarding. And because, while we have two members of the governing body here, it was the governing body as a whole that referred it to us as required since it was introduced. So I guess technically, our role would be, A, is it consistent with the master plan, I think it's the master plan. B, what are our recommendations that we make? Maybe the governing body would give us a little longer to make those recommendations so the professionals can help and perhaps we can revisit this.
And if we did that, I would have to start from scratch.
Not necessarily. It depends on ultimately what this board is going to come back to the governing body and say.
If you don't go, if you don't do the second meeting at the next meeting, then it's a different township committee and your ordinance cannot be carried over.
To start over in January.
We have to start over from the beginning.
What we could do is we could pass it and then let's, yeah.
Do what we always do, pass it and then fix it.
But let's fix it. No, but let's, let's actually, let's fix it. So the recommendation that we make should be not only go back and fix it and have it reviewed by someone other than the person that wrote it and do another, recommend another ordinance for minor.
For minor developments, right. Yeah. I agree with that.
Okay, so we'll fix it a lot.
Then Michael and I will make sure in January we start fixing these things that we have stacking up.
Yeah, corrective work.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't want to get into the as amended or the issues with the section numbers and all that kind of stuff, but just, just say it's not inconsistent. We recommend.
Because if you get into that, then, then Jared or the lawyer there will say that it has to be, you know, it's a kind of a change and we, you know, we can't do it.
And we can recommend to have another one.
Yes, just figure out.
Consider, I would say, consider including minor, just so you're not botched in.
And direct it to.
And direct it to our new engineer to write a new one.
Right.
Zion.
Right.
And I have just another question, a technical question.
Yes, sir.
I didn't read the whole thing in its entirety or in detail like John did. As far as doubling the capacity, I didn't.
You didn't double it there?
I ran it upon this time. Oh, I read that part.
Okay.
They've seen they're doubling.
The, the double.
Ship said, yeah.
Is it more effective to limit the outflow rather than try to mess with the capacity? Because that would affect the capacity inherently, right?
Is it linear or not?
It's not necessarily linear. Yes, and that's a very, very good point. By constricting the rate of runoff that's permitted, you will effectively increase the storage. Because if you say I can dump out a gallon of water, you know, I, if I take that same gallon of water, but I say I can only allow it to trickle out, as water is coming in, I need something, a bigger container in which to hold that in, to only allow that trickle to go out. You know, so yes, effectively, and what, at what point does that effectively get you to twice the storage? Is beyond my capabilities. I have staff that can kind of figure that out. And we need to have a much more, I had my chief engineer go through this and he gave me a three page memo on the things, those kind of things. And that was one of his points and that's the other point of having that storage. If you just say twice the amount of storage, okay, well, I need to meet reductions and I'm going to have a system for that. I can double the amount of storage, but it's all up at a higher level, which means that it does nothing for the smaller, more frequent storms, which can sometimes be more problematic than a hundred year storm. Because a hundred year storm, you know, a single site is going, you know, an acre site and a hundred acre drainage area has a very small incremental impact. But with smaller storms, it can have a larger impact because of how the hydrology of the drainage area will work. So it's better to have that additional storage at all levels and that can be maybe better handled by changing the reductions. I also want to look, look at, in that circumstance, we can, you agree, we can look at, how does Newark impose?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
That criteria on there because that's going to help in that, okay, you don't get a pass because you're redeveloping a site that's already fully or mostly impervious. Your goal is, in the words of the master plan, is to reduce the impact of flooding on this community. And that means that you have to correct theills of the past, which is what a lot of the stormwater rules really are about. You know, we're doing these things because when I started this business, you didn't have to do that.
So that's what I meant beyond code because the E P doesn't say that, but we can have that in our ordinance.
I think what you're saying, maybe we have to see how.
Well, clearly for mixed use and for, and for non-residential developments, you have, the state stormwater standards are a base. The D E P is not ever going to tell you that you can't do something more. The the D E P is not ever going to tell you that you can't do something more.
Yes.
Um but it's different with a hundred percent residential, because now you have to comply, and Steve can look at this as to, you know, how do you manage that within the context of it of the RSIS, which specifically states that you must comply with these criteria?
Sarah, I have a question for you then. So what is in the works? I know, I know the Woodmont development, I don't remember, I don't know. Is that, are they planning retail on the first floor or is that a hundred percent residential?
That's a good question, I don't have.
No, Wood, no, Woodmont by uh by the watershed.
Yeah, no, I don't have those specifics right now, but I can get them.
Because the question is, I want, you know, it, because I I don't know how far away they are from being complete, but I would wanna see a stronger ordinance on the books, because the ordinance on the books, when they become complete, is what rules. And I'd rather have this one that's stronger than the one we have now.
Well, just to be clear. And just, well, just before you say this, just for the record, I am recused from that matter. Woodmont, I didn't know. Woodmont is a client of mine, so I am, I am conflicted out for that, so I I am not participating in that conversation as it relates to Woodmont, um because we'll all get in trouble.
Nor will there be any conversation regarding the Woodmont, because the time of submission or time of application rule uh is such that the ordinance in effect at the time an application is submitted, uh not at the time an application is deemed complete, which is later in the process, is what legally governs uh as being operative for the board to consider, hence.
Right.
We need to discuss any applications that have already been submitted.
Right, but for things that haven't yet happened.
In the future.
It may happen in the next ten years with round four.
Exact.
In. I think we should make a recommendation that the T C get either either the planning board engineer or another qualified outside consultant to help develop a comprehensive ordinance that goes above and beyond what we have here. In the meantime, we'll determine this is consistent and at least we have something.
I think the right way, as you say, that it should be governed by, you know, how much is actually coming out of the slot? Whether you need to double or triple or quadruple to make that happen, that's that's the right thing.
Yeah, I can, this ordinance is fine now.
Yeah, this is fine, it's a good start.
It's okay with the master plan, so then we'll stay somewhere.
It's fine, except for the the, you know, the typos that, you know, went to sections that don't exist, but you know.
We're working on it.
Not like.
That's it. That's it.
So then I could.
So then, I think what we're looking, we do have a resolution uh in anticipation. I don't have the introduction date on this ordinance, so Sarah will get in, fill it in. Um but otherwise, it states that the board found the ordinance not inconsistent with the township's master plan. And unless I'm told otherwise, we will add, uh however, the board recommends that comma post adoption, comma, the township committee consider uh an ordinance, I'm sorry, a corrective ordinance? Uh if we wanna use that term.
Additional supplemental.
A supplemental, I'd be good, because I like that, but I wrote that. And then, uh supplemental ordinance to be drafted uh by the town, uh I'm sorry, to be draft uh to be drafted by the current planning board engineer or another outside engineering consultant and that such professional, I'm sorry, oh, no, and 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 that's the T C, I'm sorry, that's the township committee, that's what. Uh consider for same, among other things, the establishment of stormwater management standards for quote minor developments and quote as well, period. Is that okay? Okay, so that is the resolution uh before the board for motion second and roll call to adopt.
We have a motion? So. Take one. Roll call vote, please.
Allison Campfield?
Yes.
Michael Cohen?
Yes.
Jorge Master Petro?
Yes.
Deborah Neves?
Yes.
Frank Sekamandi?
Yes.
Michael Zion?
Yes.
Vice Chair Srini Vijay?
Yes.
Chair Justin Harper?
Yes.
Jonathan Baxter?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Call in favor?
Hi.
All close. Look at that.